If the clerk would please call the roll.
All right, trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek. All right, let the record reflect that clerk's seagres is present. Trustee, sorry, Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
Hello, everyone.
Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Now it would be time to, if I could call for a motion to the agenda with some minor adjustments we'd like to make to hopefully have the evening flow a little smoother.
So move.
Oh, we're calling for the motion, John.
All right, so, Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the agenda as written with the modification of adding item G7, Consider Offer to Purchase Property Under Wayne County Tax Foreclosure, which every trustee should have in front of them. Additionally, for those here in the audience, there are copies on the back counter. For those at home, it will be online by the time you see this. And additionally, I would like to take item G3, Consider Approval of a Letter of Intent from Wayne County for the Paving and Drainage Improvements on Ridge Road from Hanford Road to Warren Road, from item G3, and move that up to just in front of item G1, naming it item G1A.
Is that it? Do you need a second?
Yes, thank you. Those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now would be that time. That's to approve, yes, please. We have, could I have a call for, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes of June 27, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Should there be some discussion, real quick? I apologize.
Okay, for the approval after minutes?
Yeah, I believe.
Oh, there was discussion, I did not know.
Yeah, trustee Graham Hudek has.
Very good, go ahead.
Oh, it was just, I was just asking a question on the previous minutes, because we had taken roll call twice. I had, we had taken it with the Planning Commission and the Township Board. And I said I was here twice, and I just didn't know if they had to be reflected correctly in the minutes or not.
Oh, that was the issue, that's, I apologize.
There can only be one of you, still, no matter how many times you say you're here.
I was telling me, I said it twice.
Okay, I think we're okay with that one. All righty. So we have a motion. We did have a second. Those in favor of approving the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item would be Citizens' Non-Agenda Item Comments or Public Comment. If you're here to speak to something that is not currently on the agenda this evening, now would be the time. So if you're here to speak about a specific agenda item, for example Ridge Road, please wait till that item is called, and we'll discuss it at that point and call for public comment then. So if there is any other comments that would like to be made, Mrs. Jaeger, please, if you approach the podium. What I'd ask is you share your name, address, and then please limit the comments to three minutes, if you'd be so kind.
My name is Mary Jaeger, and I'm a Canton resident, and I live with my husband and three children, ages 15, 12, and nine, in our chocolate lab at 454 Innsbrook Drive and Fairways at Feser and Run subdivision. I'm also a physical therapist and a business owner in downtown Plymouth. I'm here today because of the great concern I have for my family's safety and safety of our Canton community. Our nine-year-old son Joshua was bitten by our neighbor's vicious dog on May 27, 2017. We were told by its owner that this dog was a pit bull. The dog jumped up and grabbed my son's shirt and bit his arm. It was a puncture wound to the volar surface of his distal right forearm. He has a scar from the bite wound. Prior to our son being bit, this dog had attacked our chocolate lab two times, once breaking through their electric fence and a collar, and the other time breaking through the electric fence. It was not on a leash. The third time it attacked my dog was Tuesday, June 27, 2017. I was sitting on my deck. My nine-year-old son and his friend were playing basketball in our driveway and playing fetch with our dog. I saw my neighbor's sliding door open and close, and instantly this vicious dog came ravaging, busting through the electric fence. I threw my computer in the air, screaming and yelling, because I am thinking it's going to attack my son and his friend, to come around and have my lab pinned on our driveway. I'm yelling at my kids to get inside. By the grace of God, this dog let go and ran back into his yard. This dog has also broken through its electric fence and attacked two dogs who were being walked, that we know of. My husband broke up one of these instances, where the walker just happened to be a young girl. According to Michigan law and Canton ordinances, it is unlawful for our neighbor to have a vicious dog. And if you don't mind, I'd just like to read them to you. Michigan law states if a dog bites a person without provocation while the person is on public property or lawfully on private property, including the property of the owner of the dog, the owner of the dog shall be liable for any damages suffered by the person bitten, regardless of the former viciousness of the dog or the owner's knowledge of such viciousness. Canton defines a vicious or dangerous dog as: One, shall mean any dog that is exposed to rabies or any dog that is palpable of inflicting death or serious injury on a person or domesticated animal that, one, has without provocation attacked or bitten a person engaged in lawful activities. Check. Two, has left the property of its owner without provocation, killed or seriously injured another animal. Check. Has, three, has without provocation chased, confronted, or approached a person on the street, sidewalk, or public property. Check. Four, has exhibited the propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack, cause injury, or threaten the safety of a person or other domesticated animals without provocation. Check. And five, has attacked in a manner that causes or should cause its owner to know it's potentially vicious or dangerous. Check. It has done all of those things. My family's quality of life has been drastically affected since our neighbor's pit bull has begun attacking our dog in March, actually. So it actually attacked our dog two times before it bit our son. It has evolved from not, from us not being able to let our dog outside, when the dog is out, to now I can't let my kids out and play. I can't go outside. The rule is if we are not at home, my kids do not go outside, because we are afraid that this dog is going to attack my children. I have lots of stats I could give you, but I don't have time to do that. I'm here because I do not want any family to ever have to go through what my family has had to endure these past two months. And we have filed everything with the police, we've made reports to the HOA. All of you have received a letter from us. So we're doing all the right things. And we appreciate your helpfulness. But the problem is, the pre-trial is until July 27. My son was bit May 27th, so that's two months exactly. This dog is still at the house. That's a problem. Your ordinances say that it's unlawful to have a dog, but it doesn't, there's no plan of action. Many cities have a one-bite rule. Dog bites, dog's put down. I am here because it is not safe for our community. These dogs, on pro-pit bull sites, it says that there should be a six-foot fence, pro-pit bull sites. We live in a community where many HOAs don't allow fences, and many of these communities back up to golf courses, parks, or just community areas to play. If you look at this, take a motion out of it. Look at the statistics, look at the probability of dog bites with this breed, look at the fact that Canton HOAs mostly don't allow fences. And let's just make some logical conclusions. Is Canton the best place to own a pit or pit mix? I don't think so. I don't think so. And in fact, I know so, because I've seen the attacks happen. And so we have a petition that has been signed by 82 Canton residents. We were getting signatures up until the end, so I will definitely make copies and get this to you. And I would really like to be put on the agenda for the next board meeting, like July 25, because I know you guys are going to need time to talk about this. But I want an answer. It is not right for a tax-paying citizen to be afraid to go outside and enjoy their yard with their kids. My kids are afraid, I'm afraid. It's not right. And so I want to know what you guys are going to do. Until 2014, pits were banned in Canton. There was a reason.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? What I'd like to do is share with the Board that public safety, corporate counsel have been engaged with our prosecutor, are working with the Jaegers, to hopefully bring this to an acceptable resolution as rapidly as the system will allow us to. So, that's the only comment I'd like to make to that effect. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to speak.
I know a little bit about the comments.
Could I ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address, and then I'm requesting that you speak, limit to three minutes.
When she said that nothing was, there was no process or procedure, is the dog not supposed to be quarantined after it bites a person? I thought it was like at least a minimum three days or something, quarantined.
Yes, the dog has to be quarantined 10 days after a bite occurs.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is the parties that own the dogs, they didn't do any, anything like muzzle the dog, or, I mean, because after the first bite, I would have thought that that would have had them very concerned.
This is not the forum to get into questions and answers. If you'd like to make a comment, please.
Okay.
For the record, would you say your name, I'm sorry?
Maria Jordan.
Maria Jordan, thank you. I know Maria, but I wanted her to say it anyway.
Yes, sir, if you'd like to speak, please.
My name is Habib Zubay. And I live here, we moved to Canton about four, five years ago. Before that, for 15, 16 years, we lived in Plymouth. And we bought a condo in Traditions in 2001, which we rented out. And last, a minute, year before last, we learned without any vote or anything else that the Board has decided, because the state government has made it possible for them to do it, to go and examine the place where the renters live.
Rental inspection program, yes, sir.
Yes. And there was, the Board decided this. Now, the renters are already there this year when they came. And in the contract, there is no provision that they will have to accept anybody to come visit their job. Man and wife live there. And they go to work. So they came there in 2015, first time, and looked at it. If there is any problem, the renter will always complain. This has to be fixed, this has to be fixed. But nobody from the, no engineer needs to go and look. If there is a wall working over there, the thing is this kind of stuff. Costs a lot of money to hire two engineers. But they came over there in 2015, September. And then again, because it was all fixed or not, another round came, which was last And then gave a clean slate, wrote everything is fine. So realized that everything is hunky-dory now, it's over. Now I received a letter, about a week or two weeks ago, saying that the time was up, that I had to make arrangements for another examination, because the rules are that every two years it should be done. I'm a Rotarian, and I am a Rotarian from, long, '83, '84, and then here in Plymouth, I'm still a Rotarian there. So I asked people there, do you have any such rule? He said, no, we have rules after three years. And if you own one property, then we do not examine it. You have to own multiple properties, then you will be exempt, and after three years. The charges there are $150. The charges here are $200. And if you are unable to do, go over there, then you have to pay additional penalties. I think this is not a business-friendly act, and I don't think any state allowed municipal boards that they could do such a thing, that they intended that this work will be done. I've gone up on the second floor, the ladies sit there. I must say they are very polite and extremely competent and very decent. I have no complaints about any of those employees. I found them to be extremely good. But I think that the Board should reexamine what they have done. It is not in their interest, and this is a growing community. Slightly, my personal expectation is that by year 2030, we may have additional 10,000 people living somewhere around here. They might need additional condos, and all these things come in between. How will you encourage people to move in that direction? I'm now, this is the month I turn 85. I'm an 85-year-old man. Fortunately, I'm still in good health. I retired as a professor in 2000. My wife passed away six years ago, otherwise I would still be living in Plymouth. But my kids live over here, so I moved over here. That's the reason. But I could have, I can actually sell the property here and move over and have somewhere else. But I don't think that's a problem. This is not a business-friendly act. I don't believe that this was the intention of the state government, that they go on and every two years and hire so this and that. It's all expensive. So I hope that the Board will reconsider what they have done, and if they could come in line with what they do in Plymouth, because they are twin cities. You might consider looking at it, and I hope that the matter will be resolved. How am I going to tell the people that you have to be there when it's not in the lease?
Sir, I appreciate all the comments you've made this evening.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to come sit with me in my office, I'd be more than happy to go deeper into the conversation with you. Thank you. Is there any additional board comment, please? Or public comment? We're still in public comment, we haven't shifted the board yet.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Wisack. Want me to spell that for you?
Oh, I'll be all right.
Okay, good. I'm actually here on behalf of the Jaegers as well. I'm friends with Mary, and our children play together. And as a resident of the Plymouth-Canton area, all of my life, I have never seen anything like this before. And my concern with our community at this point is that we don't have a process to, we have what happens written in the provisions, in the articles, if they break this, but what happens in the interim? And that is very frightful, especially since the home next to me is for sale. And I have four children, and they play outside all the time. And I'm a big animal lover, but to watch what has happened to these people and how it has changed their life, I just want to say, this community is a fabulous community, and it's very upsetting to see that they have been waiting and waiting for responses on this. Because that time is so precious when it comes to a dog that can do something pretty quickly. So I do want, I just wanted to add that, because I do not live in their neighborhood, but my child plays at their house. And, you know, I mean, she can't even have friends over, her kids can't have friends over for fear that, you know, somebody else's child would be hurt as well. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any additional board comment, or public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I would now like to move on in the agenda. Allow us to, Treasurer Slavens, shall we pay the bills this month?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, I make the motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Those in favor of paying the bills this month, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar.
All right. Mr. Supervisor, I'm gonna go through and read each item. I move to remove from the table and hold a second reading of an ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances for the rezoning of the parcel listed from RA Rural Agricultural District to R2 Single Family Residential District, as provided in the attached ordinance with an effective date of July 27, 2017. And further, I'm going to move to adopt and publish the second reading of an ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances for the rezoning of the parcel listed from RA Rural Agricultural District to R2 Single Family Residential District, as provided in the attached ordinance with an effective date of July 27, 2017. And that's for item C1R. Additionally, for item C, I apologize, C2R, Consider Second Reading of Amendments to Appendix A Zoning of the Code of Ordinances. I move to remove from the table and hold the second reading of an ordinance amending sections 1602, 1702, 2202, 602, and 6A15 of Appendix A Zoning of the Code of Ordinances, as provided in the attached ordinance with an effective date of July 27, 2017. And further, I move to adopt and publish the second reading of an ordinance amending sections 1602, 1702, 2202, 602, and 6A15 of Appendix A Zoning of the Code of Ordinances, as provided in the attached ordinance with an effective date of July 27, 2017. Additionally, I'm finally going to move to approve the revisions to Municipal Services Department Policy and Procedures, number MS06, entitled Water and Sewer Services Termination.
Second.
Those in favor of the consent calendar as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the general calendar, as amended, our first item this evening will be G1A. With that being said, if we could have the motion.
Mr. Supervisor, allow me to get there. I move to approve the February 28, 2017, Letter of Intent from the Wayne County Executive's Office for the Paving and Drainage Improvements along Ridge Road from Hanford Road to Warren Road.
Second. In terms of who's in the audience tonight, I believe we have residents from, that are around the Ridge Road area. We may have some residents here from Sunflower. We may have, I know we have, Commissioner Barone has joined us, also from County Executive's Office. We have Bernard Parker III, representing Warren Evans and their staff.
Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out this evening. I'm going to read a little brief summary, and then what I'd like to do is kind of open it up for public comment. And then after public comment, there may be some board questions, back and forth, to fill in any blanks, and then from there I will call for the vote. So that's the overall plan. So let me give you a very brief executive summary. After several years of discussions and negotiations with Wayne County, a letter of intent has been developed by the Wayne County Executive's Office outlining an agreement on cost-sharing for the paving and drainage improvements along the existing gravel road south of Hanford to Warren. The negotiated cost share would be 60% Wayne County and 40% Canton Township, which results in a total construction cost to Canton Township of $1,034. Canton Township would also pay the testing and construction engineering costs that total $210,000. Staff is requesting Board approval to proceed with the drafting of an undergovernmental agreement between the county and the township. And with that being said, I think what I'd like to do is now go out to public comment. And if we could, I don't know if we have an order, if we want to go front to back, but we need to have some order to it. You would like to speak first?
Yes, please.
Okay, then after that, what I would ask is to try to limit your comments to three minutes, number one. Number two, if you're going to say basically the same thing, there's not a whole lot of value add, but if there's something unique and fresh that you can add to the conversation, please at that time do share. And then I need everybody in the audience to be very respectful to one another in terms of your position on this particular topic, so that's what I'm asking for. That being said, request that you state your name, your address, and then go ahead, and about three minutes, please.
Thank you very much for having us here today. My name is Julia Greelak, G-R-E-L-A-K. I'm a resident at Royal Point West subdivision, along with many others. My address is 6861 Popleton Road, again, Royal Point West in Canton. I'm here today to represent the group of people that have worked for over three years on paving Ridge Road. And I can say, really, paving is really the only answer, because we've gone over many years of different types of treatments on that road that have not worked. And really, the reason why I'm here specifically is because of the health and safety concerns for me, myself, my family, and my community. The dust, and I don't know if you can scroll this, or if it, the PowerPoint moves at all, but there's pictures that relate on here that show the dust clouds that come through, the many accidents that have happened on Ridge Road.
Are you referring to the presentation?
That's correct.
Okay, very good.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, thank you. So you can see in this visual that there have been several accidents on the corner of Hanford and Ridge Roads. And as you can see, as you can't see, is the dust clouds we experience on a daily basis. The speed limit is high, there are hundreds of cars that come up and down this road every day. And this is the only road in all of Canton that, the north-south roads from Ford to Warren, it's the only road that's not paved. So again, back to, my personal issue is that myself and my daughter, our asthma and allergies have skyrocketed and are uncontrolled at this point because of, strictly because of this road. We did not have, I never had asthma before I moved in and was experiencing this dust. It's not just me, it's several of my neighbors. And it's something that, again, has already been paved, or already, the engineering has already been done on it, as I'm sure some of you are aware. So it's really ready to go, and we are urging you to consider this and consider it quickly. So please, I know I have a few other people that want to speak on this, and again, I really appreciate your help and your concern and understanding what goes on that we experience again every day. So, thank you.
If I could, moving from the back, gentleman in the far-right glasses, would you like to speak? And then, okay, across the row, please, come up.
I would.
Okay, please do.
I would.
Oh, you don't need to add, okay. Moving across the back row, if we could. No, 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 please. Guys, we're going to work from the back to the front, if that's okay.
Good evening, my name is Kirsten Warilla. I have that spelled out for you on the green card. I live at 6430 North Ridge Road, which is at the northeast corner of the intersection of Hanford and Ridge. So my property directly faces onto Ridge Road. The photo that you saw of the vehicle laying on its side was essentially the view from my front porch, and we were able to see that, the immediate aftermath of that accident. I'd like to add the fact that the Ridge Road conditions in that stretch between Ford and Warren may change on a daily basis, as we move from potholes to loose gravel and dust, to application of dust control liquids that produce a slippery surface. So there are a variety of hazards from the standpoint of uncontrolled speed, uneven road condition, loose gravel, slippery surface. And of particular concern to me, based on where I live, that intersection of Hanford and Ridge has some view obstructions if you are traveling west or eastbound along Hanford, and traffic is coming at a high rate of speed north and southbound along Ridge. The proposal here today, as I understand it, shows this Phase 1 area colored in light blue or gray, which would be paving from Warren south of Hanford, but not all the way south to Ford. My concern is that folks traveling southbound on Ridge may have a high rate of speed and then come into the unpaved gravel section of Ridge in an area where there's already some narrowing due to the bridge over Fellows Creek. Furthermore, I think that the obstruction that you have west or eastbound from Hanford crossing Ridge or turning onto Ridge also represents an ongoing hazard. And so for all these reasons, I feel very strongly that while paving will help with the overall travel conditions, the safety concerns, the dust, the respiratory- that while paving will help with the overall travel conditions, the safety concerns, the dust, the respiratory illness issues, we still do have a hazard at that intersection. And I think that the speed control can be mitigated by putting a four-way stop at that intersection. I personally have seen several accidents out my front windows at that intersection, and I know that there was a fatality there before we moved in. Thank you.
Moving from the back forward, Bernard, would you like to speak now, or would you like to wait till the residents? Okay, oop, I skipped a row. Okay, Bernard, if we could, please. Yeah, you also, sir, with glasses? Yeah, maybe what we could do is, those from that line, if you go ahead and, we'll form a line, if that works. Is that okay? As we go down the rows, if you're in that row and you'd like to speak, please stand up. And then, Commissioner Barone and Mister Parker, yeah, if you, when you're ready and you would like to speak in turn, then please go ahead and do so. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is George Kuchek. I'm a resident of Sunflower Subdivision, six six one eight Carlton Road. I'm also a member of the Sunflower Road Committee and the Sunflower Board. I'm here representing the Road Committee. These folks on Ridge Road, they have a legitimate concern. I don't think anybody can argue with that. However, Canton in general, and Sunflower, has a legitimate concern also. A lot of you came to our meeting last year. You know how hard Sunflower's been fighting to repair our roads. And in our opinion, three million dollars from the county and from the township would go far in correcting a lot of the road issues that Canton has. Not that Ridge doesn't deserve it, but I think people that have lived in Canton for a long, long time, like I have, we've paid taxes every year. The maintenance of our existing roads is deteriorating, and we're not addressing that. We're gonna go and spend three million dollars to add additional roads that we're gonna have to maintain down in the future? How about taking care of what we have? I have dust, gravel, issues in Sunflower that we cannot address, because there's no money from Wayne County. Well, apparently, there's three million dollars that's available. Sunflower would like to get some of that, because we have issues that we need corrected. So, you board members that are considering this, it's a legitimate issue. I feel badly for those people, but they don't know what Sunflower issues are. Wayne, Warren Road is bad. It was supposed to be corrected, it hasn't. Where's the money for that? Canton Center is terrible. Where's the money for that? But yet, we're gonna go and pave Ridge Road when we have all these other issues? It doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Very much for your comments, sir.
Good evening, my name is Matt Ward. I live at six seven six five Popleton Road. Hello, neighbors. Wonderful presentation, what little bit of it I was able to see. I think it surmised things really very well. To not repeat, as you so well pointed out, the grading that gets done, that is really a stopgap. I recently discovered how short of a stopgap that is. I avoid Ridge Road, even though it's much shorter to my direction of travel most days, and because of the condition of it. So, when I saw the grader parked at the end of Ridge Road in Warren last week, or two weeks ago, sorry, I thought, wonderful, I can drive Ridge Road for a day before it deteriorates again. And got my windshield cracked for the trouble. So, fortunately, it was a repair and not a replace, so no deductible, all good. But, as they pointed out, there are some health and safety concerns. And I think a four-way stop as part of this paving would be a great addition to that Hanford intersection, because it is a rather blind spot in some directions. As far as additional road repair needing done in Canton and Wayne Township, and really, quite frankly, greater Detroit, and probably most of Michigan, yeah, there's always something more that needs to be done. But I'll take, I'll take potholes over a flung rock zone as a preference. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Could move up from the row, okay, oh, ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, welcome.
Hi, I'm Lori Barnett. I live on six three seven six Ridge Road. I just pretty much wanna second what a lot of other people have said here today. We've lived on Ridge Road over thirty years. Many of the people that live south of Hanford have lived on Ridge Road for thirty-plus years as well. And this road has been, is the worst that it's ever been. You've seen the pictures of the dust. I have video on my phone where I videotaped cars going up and down the road, and you just can't see. It's just huge cloud of smoke. And like many have said, it's a health issue, it's a quality of life issue. We can't even go out and enjoy Memorial Day, because we have clouds of smoke, or clouds of dust coming over our property. Our landscaping gets covered with dust and dies. Our house is caked with dust. It's just crazy what we've seen. And as we understand, after talking with one of the former board members, this was an experimental treatment that they did on Ridge Road, I don't know, five, seven years ago, that just didn't work. And it's proven to be a problem for many of us, and safety issues as well. We live at the bottom of the hill on Ridge Road. And, you know, when that dust is flying up in the air, you can't, people coming down the hill can't really see oncoming traffic with all the dust. So, pretty much just wanted to second what a lot of people are saying here today. And also, I kinda wanna understand what Phase One represents. I can't really tell by the picture how far you're planning on going with this pavement, if you decide to go with it.
Sure, so, the graphic that's up on the screen shows three different phases. The phase that has been negotiated to date with the county is called Phase One. And it'll start here at the north end at Warren Road and head south to about three properties, three to four properties just south of Hanford Road. The Fellows Creek culvert, for reference purposes, is right about here. And then, it'll also include a little bit of paving on either side of Ridge Road along Hanford to address, I think, the comment that you had mentioned specifically about some of the sightline concerns at that intersection. Phase Two is a project that is imminent of construction. In fact, I expect this work to start sometime in the next couple of weeks. And this work was negotiated between the Township and Sing Developments as part of the apartment complex that's going to be built here on the northeast corner of Ford and Ridge. And Sing will be paving from Ford Road northerly about twelve hundred feet. So, what that will leave is a gap of about nine hundred feet that we're calling Phase Three, to be paved at sometime in the future. So, that's how it's currently broken down in terms of the three different phases.
And then, I just also want to mention that, you know, Ridge Road probably wouldn't be in such disrepair that it is today, and in many days, except for Kaloe and Sons Trucking that comes down Ridge Road five to seven times, five to ten times a day. And they're going down speeds of fifty-five miles an hour with their semi trucks. And it just beats the roads all to, you know, and creates all kinds of potholes and the ruts that we see on Ridge Road. So, we'd like to see possibly something being done with all of the trucking that is coming up and down Ridge Road, and a speed limit as well. Thank you.
Okay, if we could, advance to the next row up, and then, Joe, do you wanna go now, or? Okay, let's go ahead, Joe, Bernard, go ahead. And then, the next row, if you could, individuals in the next row, if they please come up and.
Well, thank you very much for inviting me and giving me, I was on vacation all last week, so I got the notice that you guys were discussing this issue. Maybe I can provide just a little bit of insight or background into this. First, I guess, since I took office in two thousand fifteen, this was probably the number-one issue that I heard as county commissioner. So, I, so, it was, if it wasn't daily, it was close to it. But someone was complaining, or someone was saying our issues on Ridge Road, bringing it to my attention, which, you know, we are well aware of. Secondly, we worked incredibly hard with our county executive. And I thank county executive Bernard for the cooperation, that we have come together as a team to try to develop a solution out here. I do understand, probably the second, second issue, I guess, that I hear all the time is dealing with lack of funding for our neighborhood roads. And those two are right up there neck and neck. The bottom line is, countywide, townships receive sixty million dollars. I've worked closely with Ron Leturno in looking, and Sunflower has done an excellent job at actually digging. I believe they just had a presentation from, was it Lawrence Tech, that kind of, here's the problem. But really, what the problem comes down to is lack of funding. It's just, it's plain and simple, it is simple as that, sixty million dollars countywide. So, if you look at all that, we're, you know, we're one of forty-three, forty-three, right? Forty-three. So, so, if you look at the numbers, and we don't, it's just, it's just not there. I know Sunflowers was eleven million dollars to get their roads fixed. So, if we have sixty million countywide, and we get eleven for Sunflower, you can see where we're falling short. That's the math. This project is something completely different. It's something that we actually, we worked with the county executive very closely to say, hey, you know, hopefully, we can get something done on Ridge Road. So, what I would like to express to the board is, this isn't just a, if we take it out of this pot and move it over into Sunflower, or move it over into one of our other neighborhoods, it's not going to happen. It is, it is a special program that we've actually developed. I mean, we are, I know probably a lot of you are aware of the bridge on Lily that we have. Those, we have a lot of bridges in a lot of sections of our county that need repair. So, in Canton, I know of one, I know of one in Northville Township, but there are plenty. So, it's not, we're gonna take it out of this pot and say, we're not gonna do Ridge Road, but we're gonna put it into our neighborhoods. It probably will go to another major needed repair, including, you know, our major bridges, major roadways. We have, Canton is flooded with them. All of our communities are flooded with major roadways that are completely inadequate. It's a federal issue, it's a state issue, and it's a local issue. But the funding from our townships come down from higher up. So, if any insight that I can provide, we worked a long time to get this, get this project close to being before you. And I think, I think we're there. So, I would hope that you give some strong consideration to approving this project. So, thank you for your time.
Parker?
Good evening. My name is Bernard Parker the Third, Deputy Chief of Staff for Warren C. Evans or Wayne County Executive, through the Chair and the trustees, and Commissioner Barone, residents. One, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to come out and just hear your concerns. I mean, these things are very important, they're important to us in county. It's one of the ways that we, if you will, keep our ear to the grind, is to understand some of the woes, things that you're going through in your communities. Commissioner Barone is actually, he's correct, you know, through your leadership, Supervisor Williams, and through Commissioner Barone, they came down to county, they said, hey, look, we gotta get this Ridge Road done, it's a health issue, it's a safety issue. You know, county exec, can you please find some money somewhere? And he was able to come up with the one point five. Unfortunately, because of the way things are going now, with limited pots of money, we don't have the luxury of taking these dollars and sitting them or banking them. In fact, we just sent out several letters to other communities, to your colleagues, Supervisor, saying that by July thirty-first, you need to give us a letter for a plan for what you're gonna do with your dollars that are allocated for roads, or we're taking the money. And I'll tell you why. Very simply, we have two hundred and thirty-two bridges, and we're doing bridge inspection of those two hundred and thirty-two bridges. What we're finding is about three or four of those bridges had to be closed, as Commissioner said, Lily is one of them. And, you know, we gotta find the money somewhere. And so, if we don't use this money, this one point five allocated towards Ridge Road, we're gonna have to take the money and put it towards bridges. Again, for us, like you, the residents, safety's an issue. And what we don't want is if, for instance, you drive over Lily, which is closed now, and you fall into the abyss, because of bridges and disrepair. Or if you're in gross ill, trying to get over gross ill, and you fall into water. Or right now, we're dealing with Ford Motor Company, Miller and Roll Tundra, where we actually had to close their lanes down, which now, we're dealing with a transportation and a financial issue. Because, as you know, time and travel is everything to the auto industry. So, we're trying very hard to be good neighbors, good collaborators. We're extremely, extremely, extremely proud of Supervisor Williams and Commissioner Barone for reaching out to the administration. We find so many times, and then I'll be brief, that you're elected, it's often complain, right? Because they think that's what you want us to, want them to do, is go down there to City Hall and kick some behind and complain and rah rah rah. And at the end of the day, they have nothing to bring home to you. Well, today is different. These two gentlemen did. They came down, they came to county, they met with us, they met with DPS, they met with our county exec, and they were able to come up with one point five million for a specific project. And so, in my mind, and I've said this to one of your trustees, in a day and age where we all know infrastructure is, infrastructure dollars are very limited, whether you look at what President Trump is doing, to Governor Snyder, down to the county, to what the city of Detroit and other major municipalities are facing, there ain't no money, y'all. So, if you're waiting for time to try to focus and figure out certain things, the ship is gonna be gone and left. So, in our mind, to have a project like this, while they're still nine hundred feet maybe unpaved, you got something, right? And then, you know, we can still, while I'm hearing the treatment isn't helping, we can still do something to try to mitigate until we can find other dollars. And what we're finding is, is that we have more communities like yours that's figuring out that rather than just say, I need three million dollars to do roads, you all are trying to figure out ways through your leadership to partner with municipality to come up with some creative ways in your neighborhoods, in your major thoroughfares, to really get this done. So, in closing, sir, you had mentioned some other projects, and you said, why isn't county doing this? And we can take the three million dollars and allocate it towards something else. And so, in August, we're actually doing road reconstruction, Canton Center, Michigan and Geddes. And that estimate completion is gonna end in November. Canton Center, Ford to Warren, we have preventive, preventative concrete patching, which will begin in August, October. And then, Ridge Road from Hanford to Warren, it says paved gravel road, which will begin in October and end sometime in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, in the summer. So, these projects that we're doing is separate and distinct from this project here. So, so, think about it. And again, I'll be brief, Mister Supervisor. If I were to go to another community and say, we're gonna give you one point five, because Canton doesn't need it, and they don't have time, and they'd rather do some other things, they would take the money. They would take the money and say, look, county is trying their best to do what they need to do through leadership to get this done. So, I really, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you, to represent my county executive. Again, I appreciate the leadership of both Commissioner Barone, Supervisor Williams, for coming down to county and really, really standing up for you guys. I mean, whether you're on one side of the fence or the other, you should really be proud of both of these individuals, as you're elected, to come down and really do something and bring something home. I guess my dad was a commissioner for twenty-two years. He used to say the best thing about his district was being able to bring the bacon home, to be able to do something for his community, no matter what. So, I thank you all, and I want you all to have a great evening, sincerely.
Thank you, Bernard. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kun Wong. I live on seven zero one one Silvania Lane. I'm from the Westchester, you know, subdivision. So, we are also, you know, we are just across. So we are also, you know, we are just across the street of the West Point, Royal Point West. So, you know, I live right along the Ridge Road, just like some other neighbors sitting in here. I think, you know, all the points, good points are pretty much covered by other speakers as well. But here, I just want to say, you know, in addition to the safety, as well as the health issues, obviously, we see a lot of dusts, you know, I personally experienced that, you know, during May-June time for the gorgeous weather, we are not able to open our windows because, you know, the dust simply blow into our house. And we're not able to use our yard up seriously. I have three kids, the two older ones are not able to go outside playing our yard. So why am I, you know, why did we just build a house in here? You know, it doesn't make any sense. So on top of the health and, you know, the safety issues, I would say it's also a money issue. What I, what I have encountered is, like, a couple of years ago, my air, my car's air conditioner was broken, and I took it to, you know, the, something, what's that called? Belt tire. And they said, it's probably because you drive on some, like, bumpy road, and, you know, it's total broken, it cost me $800 to just to fix that. So some other residents probably have, like, broken tires, frequently high-car maintenance, so that is all money. So beyond that, I would, I think I can also elaborate a little bit on why, you know, Ms. Julie said the paving the road is the only answer. I, you know, two, three years ago, I was, you know, pretty lucky and joined some other neighbors with a, with a meeting held by the former Supervisor, Mr. Lord Joy. And there, you know, several, many residents proposed various solutions, like, you know, can we put the stop signs, can we just put, like, a speed limit in there? You know, different things besides, like, paving the road. So after following that, we, several of us did different research, we contacted the State Senator, and we contacted Ms. Pagan, the House Representative, and in particular, I myself followed up with her office, who contacted the State Police Office regarding the stop signs as well as the speed limit. Unfortunately, nothing can be done there because state law says, since this is a gravel road, you cannot make a lower speed limit or stop signs, because it's by default, statewide is 55 miles, okay? So the only solution to that is to pave the road, then after this is paved, you may be able to have a lower speed limit. And another solution they proposed is that, well, you, we know you guys have this whole safety condition problem, so, you know, is that if you do want to lower the speed, the State Police has to do some survey? And if the, if they detect that 80% of the vehicle has some, for example, has like 50 miles on average for 80% of all the traffic, they are, they are not going to lower it down to 40, because 80%, if 80% travels at 50, it has to be 50. So if that is the case, nothing would help, you know, it doesn't help us at all, right? I mean, today, the vehicle travels at about 50. After the survey, they said it like 45, you know, 50. There's no change, basically.
Apologize for interrupting. We've exceeded three minutes. Wrap up.
Oh, yes, I think that's pretty much, you know, in conclusion, it's just like, the only solution we have to do is to pave the road, then we can talk about, like, stop signs and the lower speed limit, just for, you know, for easier travel access, for safety, you know, for everybody's convenience, whoever is going to use that road, this is like community-wide, Canton-wide community benefits for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Pinagin Patel, I live on 6957 Popleton Road. I just want to add two things. Canton Community School use that stretch of the road, and the bus is always parked over there, and in poor visibility, you can see what can happen. And the second thing is, Wayne County doing excellent job for the treatment, but guess what? Every time it rains, it washed out right away. So tomorrow, whatever treatment is done, if you do the treatment today, with tomorrow morning heavy rain, all the treatment is gone. So that's all I want, so the treatment is not working. And the third thing is, a lot of construction trucks use that road now, they are not using the back road, so all day long, you can see big construct, construction truck, like 40-wheeler to 20-wheelers, going back and forth all day long. That's what I want to say, thank you.
Very much. Okay, moving forward, in the next two rows, do we have anybody that would like to speak? We've got, two gentlemen are leaving, yes, speaking?
Yes, yeah. Our school is the first agent now.
You're done. Okay, very good, sir, have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
All right, please, and next row, those who would like to speak, please come to the podium.
My name is Carol Maldonado, I'm at 6380 North Ridge Road. I am at the southeast corner of Ridge, that house right there on the corner there, yep, that's me. Although, I mean, the dust is a nuisance, and to some with asthma, that type of thing, that I could see where that would be a problem. And trust me, it's, it's an issue for me, but it was something that I accepted when I moved out there. It's a country road. I've lived in Canton my whole life, I've traveled down Ridge Road my whole life. The accidents there are mostly caused from reckless driving. And my concern with this is that if you can't police it now, how are you gonna police it when it's paved and there's additional traffic? Everyone knows that traffic is horrible in Canton, you don't dare try to go to the opposite end of Canton. You know, it's a 20-minute drive, I can get to Ann Arbor quicker than I can the opposite end of Canton. So everybody's looking for an additional way through Canton, and this is gonna be one of those ways. Traffic is horrible now, and Ridge Road with the speeding and reckless driving, my neighbor across the road, I don't know where he went, but should be able to speak for this, that you can hear the cars all the time, speeding, blowing right past there, not stopping at the corner there. And, you know, you get the occasional beer can in the ditch, because I got two ditches right there. But the traffic's only gonna be worse once you do this, so, well, and I understand, it's inevitable, I see that it's gonna be paved no matter what. But then my question is, are you considering what you can do to stop the reckless driving, the additional stop signs, whatever? And then, which is another question also, where do I find the specs on this? I'm, I've been in the house for almost two years now, and I haven't heard of this. So as far as, you know, stop signs, how much of the road are they gonna be taking, that type of thing? Where do I find the specs on this project?
Yeah, we, we have submitted the complete design to the county, the county's been going through its review comments, so the plans are, you know, probably about 95, 98% done at this point. As soon as they're done, we'd be happy to share those with, with anybody that wanted.
So I don't find out what's gonna be taken from my property, cut down from my property or anything until after it's been approved? Is that how this works?
Basically, the drawings have to meet all the county requirements before the, you know, the drawings can be finished. So we can share with you preliminary drawings, if you'd like to look at those, but with the understanding that they could change by the time that they're done.
And would I contact you?
Municipal Services Department, Engineering.
Okay. And then, so that was another thing I want you to consider, is what you're gonna do to stop the reckless driving, because it's only gonna get worse, you're gonna have more traffic. And as everybody lives here in Canton, you know the traffic is horrible. And yes, there was a fatality there, right on my property, on the corner. I'd like to say, yeah, I think the money could be better spent elsewhere, but like the gentleman said, it's gonna go to somebody, so I guess it might as well go to us. But then how are we gonna maintain this? If we can't maintain the roads that we have, how are we gonna maintain this one? Where's the money gonna come from? And I guess that was basically it. Thank you.
Moving forward, next row up, anybody who'd like to speak, please. And sir, if you come in right behind, the gentleman in the back there, you'll be up next. And then while we're coming to approaching the front row, is there anybody who'd like to speak? Please, if you go ahead and get in line, any other, anybody else would like to speak in the front two rows? Okay. Go ahead, sir. If we could kind of form a line, and then we'll go ahead and work through.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Engelbrecht, I'm a 20-year resident of Royal Point West, I live at 48900 Amelia Court. I guess I've been putting up with Ridge Road for all those 20 years, probably half of the travel that I do from my home would involve going down to Ford Road and going west toward Ann Arbor. It's just an absolute hazard, I think we've pretty well established that. The major concern I have, I guess I would direct it at, at our Municipal Services Director, Phase Three, it sounds like, is that gonna stay gravel while the rest of the road is paved?
That's correct, until such time that funding can be found to complete that roughly 900 feet of pavement.
It seems like that would create more of a hazard for people that are coming off the pavement onto gravel, and it's in a, in a limited visibility area, it's down in that, in that little hoop-de-doo. And I would, I'm, I would like to see us establish some kind of timeframe when that could be completed, or is there a less expensive way where you could at least do a partial paving of some form or another, other than?
I hate to make a terrible joke right now, but I think it might be appropriate. Example, my subdivision, probably yours too, the internal roads are owned by Wayne County, they're gonna do the snow plowing for you in August. In terms of that little section, in terms of us being able to commit timing without having a major roads plan for the entire community, which is something the new board is serious about looking at, but that's not gonna happen overnight. That's gonna be a year and a half, two years out till we have a master plan.
And it seems to me that as difficult as it is to get the county to maintain Ridge to the full length of it, if you've got just 900 feet, they're never gonna come out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
I'm David Branchaw. I'm afraid I'm the first property north of Fellows Creek that's not getting paved. And the improvements that have been made over the years, adding gravel, adding gravel, adding gravel into that hollow, I've raised my driveway three times. When I did it three years ago, into my driveway was even with the center of the road. The guardrails were well above the roadway. Now, the top of the guardrails are almost even with the center of the road. I've had cars on top of the guardrails, I've, you can see the east side guardrails all bent where they slammed into the side about two months ago, when the roads were really bad. Had a car at a 90-degree, right even with my driveway, facing the westbound guardrail. They've wiped out my mailbox several times because they lose control. The big trucks going down the road vibrate my house because of the rough roads. And I'm being left out, I've been there for 35 years. My wife's been there longer. My neighbor, just across Fellows Creek, has been there basically all of his life, he's my age. Long-term Canton residents, left out. I agree, it needs to be paved, but a 900-foot section, when all your equipment is there, can't cost that much more to do when your equipment's there. I'm sorry, but I disagree with having Phase Three and not having that as part of Phase One. And I'm not sure why it's not being done when the rest of it's being done. And the trucks, heaven forbid, anybody be walking or have a problem with their car on that road, those truckers will never stop in time. And with the way the road comes down now, being gravel, guess where all the water goes? Right down my driveway. There's nothing been addressed in 35 years to control that water flow down that slope into my driveway, down, washing out the dirt at the side of my driveway into the creek. I've got land erosion like you wouldn't believe, because it's not under control. Had you figured the Phase Three in when you were doing this, that would have been addressed. You're asking for even more accidents where you're going from one pavement to another. We have a school over there, and a school around the corner, that don't have school buses running to them. Private cars flying up and down this road, they think it's an expressway. Do you think they're gonna slow down for 900 feet? No. I've got a car with 60,000 miles, broken struts, broken springs, bent rims because of the bad maintenance of the gravel road. And I mean, I go 20, 25 miles an hour down the road, which is at the speed or slower than the yellow 25, which means it's only in a suggested speed limit, that nobody follows. It needs to be white signs that are enforceable so that the people living along there can live in a safe condition. And people talk about roads in the subdivisions, they're still blacked out, they may be rutted, but they're nothing like what this road is. Been there long enough, and what we, the traffic we have has gotten so bad, there's times I can't even get out my driveway, and when it's, the dust is a big issue, which it will still be in front of my house, and I'm in the worst possible place for this traffic. The dust, you're not gonna see, for me to get out of my driveway, they're gonna come flying through there even worse than they are now. How am I gonna safely get out of my driveway? I had my left turn signal on to go into my driveway, and I have peaceful pass me on my left, because they're in too much of a hurry to allow me to even turn into my driveway safely. And this is only gonna get worse when I'm right at the end of the blacktop. And if we don't put stop signs, and hidden driveway signs, and other things to slow down that traffic, more than just the people that have been killed at the intersection at Hanford are gonna, is gonna happen. There's gonna be people going right over those guardrails into the creek. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments. Next.
My name's Gary Agdorni, I live at 6200 Ridge Road, been there since 1962. I've seen a lot of you come and go. I've talked to more of you than you probably know. And I agree with Dave, he lives next to me. Not paving that 900 foot, I understand the expense, and I understand the paperwork and what's involved to try and get it in there, done helped me, okay? I own most of Phase Three. That's my property along through there, most of it. I would like to see something done with it. I guess I'd like to have somebody answer the question, is if you don't pave it, how you gonna take care of it? Better you do now? Probably not. I've dealt with Wayne County, longer than those gentlemen have worked for Wayne County. They're no deal with Wayne County. They come out now, and they've been praised for what they do to the road, it's not like they used to do to the road. So they don't get any praise from me. They're doing a job just barely. They don't chloride it correctly, they go down the middle, the edges aren't covered, the speed limit's too fast, the trucks have been mentioned, there shouldn't be any trucks that come down that road that's through traffic to the dump, because that's where Calo's going. Now, if those trucks are needed for the construction down there of Singh's Project, I'm okay with that. I'm not stopping your progress. You need to stop people that are abusing the road, and you wouldn't have the conditions you got. Somebody's gonna get hit out there. That school takes their children, and they run down that road. They have a track and field group that runs up and down that road, and on those days, it's that dusty. We've called the Canton Police, and their answer was, it's fine. That's a shame. That is really a shame, and they should be ashamed. When you can't see how's it safe for children, and how's one of those trucks gonna stop? It ain't. You're gonna kill one of them. You're going to kill one of them. And I'm going to be on the other side of the board that's suing you for the death of that child, because I have told these people more than once that's going to happen, and you ignore it. You're wrong. That isn't right. So if you do something, paving it is fine. I think that's a fix. But if you ain't going to pave it all, you ain't fixing. You're putting a Band-Aid on it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Vijay Maru. I live in the Westchester subdivision. Address is 50001 Palham Court. I have been living in that subdivision for the past seven years. A lot of speakers came here. They were very eloquent, very well-prepared notes. I don't think I can hold a candle to them. But one point which I would like to add, I don't think there is anything new that I can add here, but I have incurred personally thousands of dollars on my vehicles where damaged wheels, damaged air conditioning, and I had a broken windshield, a broken control arm. So a lot of expenses that I incurred. Secondly, from a safety standpoint, I drive my kids to the Canton Charter Academy there, and with the cars flying there, with so much of dust, it is a hazard. Sometimes I really can't see what's in front of me in the morning with so much of dust. And likewise, when I pick up the children in the evening, same thing happens. So in ending, what I would like to say is that I strongly second whatever proposals that the others residents have laid out, and I strongly support the paving of this road. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hey, my name is Wu. I live in the subdivision that Singh just built, 4982 Palham Court Road. I'm not very close to Ridge Road, but I'm so happy that, you know, we have the opportunity to express my concerns. One issue that I had is, you know, I see that the traffic is really, really very heavy, and it's increasing, you know, day by day along Ridge Road. And you can see the, you know, how quickly the potholes form on the road, you know, no matter it's rain or not. If it's rained, it's immediately, you know, the potholes is everywhere, and very deep, and you cannot drive through. But I do see, you know, a lot of, you know, big trucks coming back and forth at a very alarming speed that caused really kind of, you know, for the kids especially. And one occasion that my daughter, you know, she is a student at U of M, and she has to drive to, you know, at night, you know, to attend the seminars, come back late, and then she almost, you know, hit by a truck because of the dust, you know, the huge dust, you know, when the car goes by. So, you know, she couldn't see, you know, three or five meters past, farther than that. So, you know, she almost hit by a truck. So, you know, that alarmed me, and I think that, you know, that's very dangerous for her, so I, you know, suggest her to take another route, that, you know, go, you know, all the way to Cannon Center Road and then on Ford Road. So now, every time she goes by, she will do like that, you know, run about. So it's kind of ridiculous. I came from a third-world country. I've never seen my hometown city that has a road like that with such heavy traffic. You know, financial standpoint that, you know, people made out that, you know, we have to move the funds to other more needed areas, but I don't see that, you know, this area, this road is less needed to be paved, to be honest with you. And I just traveled to Canada, you know, and I see the road there are so good, and I so envy that. And I came, you know, I just moved here from, a year ago, from Tennessee, you know, Knoxville, and the road there are much, much better than here in the town, you know, of Canton Center, Canton. And we've paid, you know, at least four times, you know, the tax, more property taxes here than I paid in, you know, the same size of house in Tennessee. So I really doubt, you know, there's no ways that we can just make the road a little better for our kids, for our children, for our kids. So, you know, thanks for coming out to listen to our, you know, concerns. Thank you so much.
I think everybody who has wanted to speak has spoken. Have we completed resident comments at this point? Very good. What I'd like to do is quick, I think we've covered what the zones are, that's covered. The only thing we haven't discussed is two quick, easy questions, at least relatively If we were to do this project, do we have the capacity to service the debt? And that would be for Wendy. And then a follow-up question would be, from a public safety perspective, Director Meyer was asked very specifically, by doing this, would there be benefit to the community? What is that benefit? And if you, sir, would please share that with us. So Wendy, if we do go out and bond, do we have the capacity to service the debt? Yes or no?
Yes, we do have the bonding capacity, as well as we do have some fund balance available in our Community Improvement Fund.
Please introduce yourself, because you're kind of new to the group. In terms of presentation, you're sitting in for Director Meyer, who's out of town.
I'm Craig Wilshire, I'm the deputy chief of the police department. From a public safety standpoint, as the growth to the western side of the township, the traffic does increase, which again, in those intersections, especially Ridge and Ford and up Ridge Road, will increase accidents. And then everybody has mentioned the conditions of the road, which add to the likelihood of those accidents. That is a public, that is from the police department's standpoint. From the fire department's standpoint, the Ridge Road as it is decreases response times for the fire department to get to certain parts of the jurisdiction, because they have to go around Beck Road to avoid the potholes and the conditions of Ridge Road. It will increase because of these, they're large engines and things of that nature, so the damage that people have talked about to their vehicles, you could... ...fire truck or an ambulance that drives down that road.
I think now would be a good public board comment or questions, if there's still any open-ended questions? And I don't know if we want to go left-right, or would you like to begin?
I just have a real quick question a few people brought up, and why did they not have Phase One, and why didn't they just do Phase One, Phase Three together? I don't know if the commissioner or...
It's money. And the commitment that Wayne County could make to the project was limited to the 1.5 million that was reflected in the letter of intent that's before the board. And just so I guess everybody's aware, Phase Three is one of the more expensive phases, as it was pointed out by the one gentleman, that Fellows Creek crosses the road at this point, and there's some significant improvements that are required to the culvert that crosses Fellows Creek. So that's why the project ends where it ends, and that's why Phase Three is one of the more costly phases of the three that are reflected here.
Follow-up, sorry, real quick. Ballpark figure of the cost, and how would we find the funding? Have we been putting monies aside?
Yeah, we'll get back to you with that number, but off the top of my head, my recollection was Phase Three was another 600-some-odd thousand dollars, the bulk of which is in the cost of repairs and/or replacement of the very large culvert that crosses at the Fellows Creek.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, let me start out by saying that I want Ridge Road paved. I'm not saying that I don't want Ridge Road paved. I've been talking about this since I joined the board five years ago. And I understand all your concerns in terms of quality of life and safety and things like that, and those are some of the reasons why I want Ridge Road paved. However, I will be honest with you, the number-one reason why I want Ridge Road paved is to offload traffic off of Ford Road going east in the evenings, when I see it backing up from the Beck Road light all the way to Ridge Road at times. And I'm sorry, that's the number-one reason for our community, I think, to pave this road, which means there will be, of course, more traffic coming by your homes. So with that said, what I'm being presented with tonight is not the whole solution for that. And I think we need to work on the whole solution for that. Now, when this was first presented to me as just an idea in 2014, 2015, we were told that what we were working towards, and a tentative agreement had been put forward, was that it was going to cost the township $600,000 to get this done. And it was never said that it wouldn't be a total solution, combining that with Mr. Singh's portion that he was agreeing to do. So that felt like a reasonable thing for us to do as a community. But I don't know if you're all aware, maybe you all are, but this proposal right now is going to cost Canton out of our general fund dollars, whether it's money we put aside for fixing buildings or whatever, 1.25 million dollars of our money. And that's not even to do the full solution that we saw here. And so I am really uncomfortable approving, moving forward in something which is essentially twice the cost of what I thought it was going to be originally, and not the full solution for what I'm looking for as a trustee for our community. I want to get Ridge Road paved. I think it's important for us going forward as a community. I also think we need a study done that shows what it would do to offload traffic from Ford Road. I also think we need a full study done for our community-wide on what our priorities are for our community, just for all priorities, but specifically for our roads, our surface roads, our major thoroughfares, and our subdivision roads as well. There is no way to fix all our road problems without all of us, each of us, paying more than we do today. There's not some big bucket of money somewhere that's going to fix an $11 million problem in Sunflower that's going to fix what is essentially really now being told $2 million problem for Ridge Road, and that's just two small ones in our community. I mean, this is probably a few hundred-million-dollar problem, and I don't even know the exact numbers, because they haven't been presented yet. So I think we need to put together, as a community, a full plan, including Ridge Road, and when it will be done, and how it will be done, and how it will be financed. But we haven't done that yet. And so I'm not prepared today to vote for the solution that's been presented to me. I would personally like to postpone, or put this on the backburner for another year while we work on that plan. It sounds like we can't do that from the county's point of view, but that would be my preference. So at this point, I'm probably going to vote no on what has been presented tonight. And that really frustrates me, because I want to pave Ridge Road. Another point I'd like to make, and Tim, can you put up the phases again? If you look at the map that shows up there, for the main portion of what we're doing north of Hanford Road, what do you see? You see two subdivisions. As a community, we have not put our developers' feet to the fire over the last 20, 30 years to say, "When you develop, you pave the road." And right now, we have on our docket other parts of our community where developers are coming in, and we are not putting their feet to the fire. Bar Road down in southwest Canton, there's already been one approved, and there's others coming up. And from what I'm told from our administration is that it's the county that has to put the developers' feet to the fire. I don't know if that's true or not. I trust my administrators. But unless the county tells them that they, in order to approve, that they have to pave Bar Road, which is 2030's Ridge Road, right, we're going to be in the same situation down there. So that's my frustration in terms of working to make our community livable, have great quality of life. I think we need to talk about how we finance all these roads. To be honest, folks, I think we need our taxes to go up. I think we need to raise taxes to pay for roads specifically. I think there's no other way to do it. It's not going to come out of nowhere. We have money, as Director Trumbull said, put aside for fixing the buildings that we have put on hold for the last five years, and our parking lots and things like that. I don't want to use that money for this. So that means we are going to have to finance it. If we finance it, we have to pay back that money that we borrow. How are we going to do that? Through millage. It's the only way to do it. So I'm not saying I don't want to do this, but I don't want to do this proposal. So I really feel bad about it, because I know that you guys are suffering, but at the same time, we need to do it right. So that's what I got to say about it. Thank you.
Anne Marie?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for everyone's hard work. I know there's a lot of passion and emotion around issues like this, and I really understand. I lived on a dirt road for two years, and there's a way of life of living on a dirt road, like one of the young ladies said, that there's certain things that you live with, unfortunately. What I hear here is we definitely have a speeding, reckless driving issue on that road. It sounds like we need to add stop signs if we can, or maybe even ticket via cameras if we have to, to slow down traffic. I mean, that's important. So maybe we can do that with public safety, seeing how we step up the patrols or step up the ticketing. Basically, we need a complete township solution, like trustee Snyderman said, with prioritized projects and budgeted funds, like we had spoken about weeks ago. It's really important that we have budgeted funds for projects like this. Right now, Director Foss, you had emailed me earlier, we have 18 local dirt roads in Canton that are getting this calcium chloride treatment right now, local roads. Is that correct?
Those are local roads that the township pays for. There's several other gravel roads in the township that the county is directly responsible for.
And they all get this calcium chloride treatment? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, and we have residents living on those roads also? Correct? Okay. So the Pacer Project, we had the gentleman from Sunflower speak. They did an excellent study, a Pacer Project. Basically, what that is, I just want to explain what we're looking at with a good prioritized study, is they had a company come through, and they had students come through, and they categorized the roads. So they went through, and they took pictures of cracks, of gravel, of potholes. A lot of these potholes contain gravel, broken roads, broken sewers, and they categorized them. And it was an excellent study they did with an engineering firm, and they basically said, "Here's our study, and here's the priority of the roads, and the subdivision, how we want to fix them." That is something we need to do across this township. We have students that are STEM students in the Plymouth Canton schools that would love to help with something like this. We have, Lawrence Tech has already helped Sunflower, so I see that they would probably like to help with something like this, give some students some experience. But it's really important that we be proactive in watching over this township and prioritizing what needs to get done. So like we've been told, we're looking at 1.24 million dollars, and we're looking at Phase Three, maybe another 600, maybe even more by the time we get there. I think it's dangerous to have dirt, then pavement, then dirt again. I think that's a dangerous site right there. I also think that the gentleman who talked about the water going into his driveway, maybe our engineering group could look at that and see why he's getting so much water from some of this dirt. But I just really think that it's important, I have notes all over the place, sorry. I just heard a lot of passion in the room, that we look at the speeding issues, we put together this task force, and we really look at all the town, and like Mr. Snyderman said, pull this from the table until that task force is complete. I also heard the gentleman from Wayne County state that, you know, the funds would be pulled back. He did mention Lily Road Bridge, and I also heard him mention that those funds might be used for bridges. So I hope that if that is the case, that we get some of that done, because I know we have hundreds of people being detoured on the... because I know we have hundreds of people being detoured, unable to go to work down Lily Road also. So you can see that this whole township is impacted, and we have to look at everything. And I think a good Pacer study would really help us. Thank you.
Steve, you did some work. I think Steve's presentation is excellent. It sort of puts it in focus. My problem is, we're going to, I was going to say piss away, but I will say, we're going to piss away 1.5 million, and I don't like that. It's hard enough, the gentlemen here from Wayne County, Mr. Parker and Mr. Barone, they've worked hard on this. Pat Williams has, a previous administration has, a lot of time and effort has been put into getting, when's the last time Canton Township got 1.5 million from Wayne County, from anybody? And there's been a lot of work and effort put into it. My concern is, if we give this up, we're never going to get anything from Wayne County ever again. Now, you can say, well, that's not, trust me. When's the last time we got 1.5? Never. When's the next time? If we give this up, what's going to make them think that they should give us 1.5 when there are 40-some other communities around that also would like to have 1.5? We give this up tomorrow, some other community is going to get that 1.5. It's not a complete solution. I think, Steve, I think you're absolutely right, and Ann Marie, it's not the complete solution. But it's here, it's now, it can help. It may not be the final solution, it may not be what everybody would like, but it's certainly better than a dirt road that's there now. I'm in favor of approving this request.
Michael, would you like to add comments?
Sure. Thank you very much, Supervisor. Just some questions because I had to leave for a moment there, and so I just, did you say for Phase Three, the cost, did you say was 600,000?
Yeah, I've double-checked that. I pulled up the spreadsheet, it's $583,000 for the additional phase.
And would that, and I'm just curious, would that include a pedestrian option? Because I know, I think it was two weeks ago, we had residents over on Cherry Hill talking in favor of us spending money on a pedestrian bridge and a pathway because they were concerned about safety, people, there was a gap in the sidewalk, it went over a drain similar to here, and so residents had to walk on Cherry Hill Road. So would there, if we did Phase Three, does the 600,000 include pedestrian option? Because I imagine there will be more development.
There will not be any more development there.
The apartments, right? They're going in?
Apartments will be constructing sidewalk, but there'll be no other development in these areas unless at some point in the future, the property owners that own these properties here on the east side, for some reason, chose to sell, consolidate, and try to develop something there. But the 583,000 does not include any pedestrian bridge over top of the river at that, or over top of the Fellows Creek at that location.
Now, within a similar situation tonight that I was at that meeting where the 208,000 to put in the trail and to build the bridge was not budgeted, we had entered into a negotiation or, you know, we went out, sought grants and entered an intergovernmental agreement, we did get, I think, 210,000 from, it was a SEMCO grant, right? If I'm not mistaken? So that was awesome. That was fantastic. More than half the project was covered through additional funding. We still had to pay 208,000 that we didn't budget. And I think the case can be made that there's a safety issue there. I believe in a walkable community, much like I believe in having safe roads, safe streets, having, you know, all of the concerns that were brought up tonight. My major concern was, is we entered into that discussion years ago without any force thought into a funding mechanism. And much like, it sounds like the discussions were, go back to 2014, here we are without any discussion about, or we are discussing, but without a fundamental plan for a funding mechanism. So I believe our previous solution was to take the 208,000 out of our capital, our Community Improvement Fund, which was money that we wisely set aside because the township has a lot of capital spending. We have a lot of parking lots, we have a lot of parks, a lot of buildings, a lot of employee, you know, and capital, you know, a lot of our facilities are aging, and we're doing a study that's going to determine how much money we have to spend on all of our capital. And so we put away money a couple of budgets ago, just over $3 million, to meet those needs. Now, we've already dipped into it for an unbudgeted project that is not on township property. I heard that that was a fund that would be a potential for paying for this. So we would have, by the time we're done with the cost of this project, the cost of the path and the pedestrian bridge there, not dealing with Phase Three, and with the engineering costs, we will have almost reduced that fund in half, and we have, will have yet to have spent a dime on Canton Township property for which that fund was created. You know, my background is in accounting, and so I get a little bit nervous when we don't, you know, when we don't budget, you know, because I do believe this is a priority. I actually believe all of the roads in the township are a priority. When this budget, when this agenda came through my office and I walked over to the Treasurer's Office to talk to Treasurer Slavens, I was actually interrupted by a resident who wanted to complain to me about Canton Center Road. You know, I understand that roads are fundamental at their core. I mean, I've been in and around this township since I was, you know, very young, and many people would argue I'm still young, but, and people have always talked about Ford Road. They have always, you know, we've always talked about roads in general, and recently you hear a lot about neighborhood roads because of all of the concrete that was put in that has that alkaline acidic reaction that caused it to bust up. We've got an infrastructure problem in Canton, Michigan, we've got an infrastructure problem in Michigan, we've got an infrastructure problem in the state, and we have an infrastructure problem in this country, and we are not addressing it. This may be the most important project in Canton Township. There's a lot of people here tonight who think it is, and you may be right. I don't know. We haven't done a Pacer study. I don't know. I can tell you, I would like to see a long-term fix to Ford Road. I can tell you, I think our surface roads, the county-owned surface roads, are unacceptable. I think that the people here who pay taxes deserve more. I think that the neighborhood roads are hurting our property values. And that brings me to tonight. Am I comfortable spending 1.2 million not knowing where it's going to come from, offsetting another expense on a project that I can't determine if it is the most important? And to be honest, do a partial repaving, because I was under the impression additional early on that it was going to be a full repave. So with outstanding cost, with the concerns that were brought up about the fact that it's a partial repayment, I am glad about the 1.5 million dollars from Wayne County. I'm actually encouraged that the county is working so well with Canton Township. I'm really grateful to see Mr. Parker, the Deputy Chief of Staff for Warren Evans here, Commissioner Barone, I know, is working hard, David on his staff, I believe, Supervisor Williams. And so I'm encouraged to see the amount of work that's going in, that tenacity. I would like to see a vision for this township where we take some ownership over our infrastructure. I think it's important. I want to see a plan. I don't want to throw darts at a board and go with my gut on what project I think is the most important. I want to know, I want to see it on a balance sheet. I want to see an accounting of the books. I would like to know what the actual obligation would be, and I don't know if this project gets us any closer there. So I, you know, yeah, I can't spend 1.2 million of money from taxpayers all around the township if I can't on paper expressly say without a doubt that this is the best, most optimal use of those funds, and especially if it's only a partial repave, that's a hard sell for me.
Thank you. Someone would you like to add anything?
Sure. Thank you very much to Mr. Parker from the County Executive's Office and to Commissioner Joe Barone for your hard work on this project, and to Supervisor Williams, and thank you to all the residents who came out tonight to express your thoughts about Ridge Road. I always think it's good to have people here and to hear from residents and how our policies impact them. As I look around Canton Township, we have a lot of needs when it comes to our roads, the surface roads, Ford Road, neighborhood roads. And for me, I went back and forth on this issue ever since we got the packet. For me, it comes down to spending 1.3 million of township money without seeing how that money fits into the larger plan of fixing our roads. And so for me, I need to see that plan and to see how, if fixing Ridge Road is the priority, is the number one priority for the majority of Canton residents, and I haven't seen that. So like a few of my other board members mentioned, that having a Pacer study would be helpful, or even having a breakdown of what roads in the township need what work, and I haven't seen that. So as much as I think that Ridge Road needs to be paved, and I absolutely 100% that it eventually needs to be paved, I don't think that's the right time to expend 1.3 million dollars of township money.
I just, because I did have a few questions for Tim early on, and I just wanted to, because I know we all have been talking for a long time, it's quarter to nine already. I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank the Commissioner for working hard with our Supervisor. I know people put a lot of time into this. I too am concerned with spending 1.3 million and not quite sure where to get it. I think we need a plan, I know we need a plan. As I see Lily Road is blocked off, we drive up Canton Center Road, all of the roads. Wayne County isn't able to help us maintain those roads, and so I hate to see this partial plan, God help us, if something were to happen in the Phase Three when people are driving, you know, with a partially paved road, it's just frightening to think about. So as much as I know that Ridge Road will need to be paved, I don't think, we don't have the funding for it right now, I don't believe. But I do appreciate all the hard work, and, you know, I would like to have us consider putting together a Roads Task Force. We really need to start focusing on where we need to spend our dollars, and so I would just kind of suggest that maybe for the next meeting, one of us put a resolution together on that. So thank you.
Would the staff like to make any final comments?
Well, what you're asking is a really big undertaking, there's no question about that. For, certainly, the staff would not be able to undertake the scope of work that you're looking for to come up with an assessment of all 500 and some odd miles of road in Canton Township. We would need some significant engineering consulting resources to make that happen. It's a lofty goal. Obviously, there's a big financial commitment to make that happen, but if that's where the Board's priorities for spending are, then, you know, we'd be happy to put that together.
I had to make a bootleg estimate, cost.
I'd say you're probably talking something on the order of 12 months or more of time by a professional consulting firm, probably upwards of a million bucks of cost.
Michael?
So, you know, you know, prior to becoming clerk, I would always, you know, every time I heard a complaint about the roads, the number one thing we would say to people, and it actually says it on our website, is Canton Township doesn't own any roads, which is partially true, right? We have an agreement, I believe, for the Summit Parkway with the subdivisions, but county roads, state roads, and then neighborhood roads are owned by the Homewares Association. So whenever people would complain about the roads in general, we would then point them to Commissioner Barone, before him, Commissioner Price, to Bernard, and, you know, we would do the complaining like Bernard talked about before. It's very easy to pass the buck, and I'm not interested in passing the buck. I think the Board is very clear that it's our intent, that we want to put time, energy, and resources into coming up with a comprehensive solution, because, I mean, I'm a can-do person, and so I understand there might be barriers or burdens or challenges along the way, but I think the message tonight that I'm picking up from the Board is that there's kind of a clear direction on where we want to go on this, and I think we would be willing to sit down with Supervisor, with the Commissioner, with the County Executive's Office and say, you know, what does Canton look like in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years? How do we get there? What's the problem? What's the solution? And hopefully, I know the county's probably got some Pacer studies on their roads that they have, so some of that work might be, we might be able to grift from them, so.
Thank you. In terms of final comment, if you guys don't mind, I'll make a few very positive comments. I could sit here and be rhetorical for, is there additional public comment? I see a couple of hands going up there, but.
I don't believe people wait a year, two years, 12 years to fix Ridge Road. We know it's partial, partial and terrible enough. Still, Wayne County's still grading what they can grade, like stone and stuff down, because there's a cost, that cost only, we do, I believe, once it's paved, it's not going to add up, we won't have to down there, grade it, it's locked, that's going to be a nonparticular section, they're going to have to be graded.
Sir, I'm sorry to cut you off.
I'm going to ask.
It looks like we've got arms going up, so what I'm going to ask is, Forma Lion, if you'd like to make a final additional public comment at this point, and then, sir, if you'd like to approach the podium a third time, you're more than welcome to, but I'm going to ask you guys, please be brief, and if it's been said already, don't repeat, please.
Carol Thompson, I live on Poppleton Road. I use Ridge Road to get to Ford Road because I work out in Ann Arbor. I will tell you, in the mornings, the high school traffic from all the subdivisions that we're building now west of Ridge Road is using Ridge Road to get to the high school. So we've got the new Pulte Subs, we've got the Toll Brothers Subs, we've got the Cherry Hill Village, and if they need to go to high school, what are their options? Ridge Road or Beck Road? And I think we're, it's a huge amount of people using that road.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Menes Patel, 7033 Union Valley Circle, Westchester Division. Two things what I just heard between all the comments and everything from the trustees' Board, when you say that you guys are planning to discuss this in future, first of all, you guys paid 150,000 or something for the engineering work to get this thing going. Another thing is, if you are saying that you want to research for the, all the township roads, as per the director says, it's going to cost a million dollar, you guys are willing to spend million dollars to do the research on that, and you are not willing to spend 1.3 million when you can fix the health issues and all the other concerns we have it so far. Another thing I would like to add is that whenever we have a potholes, I create the ticket with the Wayne County, they close the ticket the next day, and they don't show up for a month or two months while we have all these potholes keep getting bigger and bigger. I have like five tickets so far that they close it and they never come, and it's still not fixed, and this is a big concern other than the health issues, we have to take that road, and it is not getting fixed. So thank you very much.
Speaker.
Kristen Warless, 6430 North Ridge. I appreciate the comments and the serious consideration that the trustees have articulated this evening and the need for a systemic solution. I would, however, ask that if this is not the solution, that we don't abandon the thought of public safety and that we look into stopgap measures. If a bridge were out, we would put up signs saying no through traffic, we would put up barriers, we would protect citizens. If our solution today is not an imminent paving of Ridge Road, then I would argue that we cannot just leave it as is, that we need to do something to reduce the speed, reduce the dust. reduce the dust, and reduce the risk to pedestrians and vehicular traffic using that stretch of road. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, name, address.
Venkatesh Radachulam.
And guys, I'm going to ask you, because we are starting to recycle.
Tilwaniari.
I'm going to ask you respectfully, everyone, let's not.
We are not doing this project today. Tomorrow, or after a year after, Canton will spend more money on it because of inflation and everything, right? And today you got the county's money, and we already spent money on it, 200K. And Canton is the one who approved the school in Ford Road. At that time itself, if they didn't speculate that there is going to be traffic in this road and we had to pave it, then our city is not doing the right job. And most of the board members are saying, oh, we have to plan, we have to do this, we don't know this. It's acting as a surprise when every other citizen is aware of what is going on. So which is a surprise to me, that why we never give this assignment to our engineering team, saying, hey, whether we can come up with that Phase Three right now, along with Phase One itself. Whether we have given those assignments already, not today, early on, when it was in planning phase itself. Why we are talking now that it is acting as if a big surprise, it can be a surprise for us, not to the Board. Thank you.
Next, please.
Sayad Mahdi, my address is 49639 Annandale Drive. And I'm a big supporter of paving the Ridge Road. And to me, $600, just postponing this pavement, just because of $600 difference is nothing. I mean, I mean, it will be like a million, I mean, 100, a million dollar or more than, just for my year from now. And this is road mostly used by the residents to go to drop the kids off to school, because this street is very close to two elementary and high, elementary schools.
Ken, sir, please, let's not repeat, guys. Let's wrap this up.
Okay, so that's the bottom line.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate your comments. I really do. Next speaker, please. And after, gentlemen, sir, are you coming up to speak? You are the last speaker.
Hi, my name is Saravin Venkateshalam. I reside in 49621 Annandale Drive. I don't want to add to what everyone said. All I could infer is residents and citizens of Canton are for this project, and the Board seemed to be not for it. I didn't understand why. The only thing I could take away is, the 40% of Canton's contribution is going to come off of some reserve fund. Is that the reason? I don't know. I'm for it, should happen. You're going to lose away free money that we get from the county. I'm disappointed.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Marcus Ivory, 4972 Annandale Drive of the Westchester Community. I just wanted just to come in personally, I felt compelled to speak, to express my disappointment to the Board. You mentioned in terms of not being one to pass the buck. But in a sense, I kind of felt that that's being done here tonight. And I just wanted to express my disappointment as far as that's concerned. I feel that we have real concerns that have been expressed by the community here. And I feel that not only the real concerns have been expressed, but also feel that we have real dollars that are available. So I ask that as you go through your process, as we talk about the studies and things of that nature that are going to be done, that the Board does whatever that they can in order to expedite those studies, to try to address the concerns that have been expressed by the community. Thank you.
This is Kun Wang again. I think I appreciate your comments, all the, you know, as a trustee to consider the community, King Canton as a whole, you want a plan, I understand that. But, you know, since we have been fighting for this issue for years, I would like to see a plan from the Board, okay, from the town, exactly what you can do for us. Okay? If you can, if we cannot pave the road right now, what can you do for us, at least to mitigate our problem? Okay? So what's a plan? We would like to see that. Obviously, the stop signs and, like I said before, stop signs and speed limit thing, we have been discussing that for a long time. That's, my understanding is that's not possible without paving the road first. So what can we do about it?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
One thing that hadn't been mentioned is, several years ago, we built a Denton extension that connected Denton all the way from Michigan Avenue to Ford Road, as it joined Ridge. That increased the amount of traffic flow, and it actually took a lot of weight off of Beck Road. We've still got a gravel road here. We're in a third world condition there, and it just doesn't make sense to me. I don't understand taking and breaking this one mile project into three phases. And I'm very disappointed if we don't, if we don't do something about it today. I just, it's just very frustrating. We're going to pass the buck, and it'll be another five years, and still nothing will have happened. Thank you.
Last two speakers, please.
Rich Felcher, Royal Point West. It's disappointing that you talk about money when we're building all kinds of new homes in this, inexpensive homes. You're getting a lot of tax revenue. My taxes on my home have gone up to higher than they've ever been. So I don't accept the argument that there's no money. I don't accept that we can't, all these people showed up telling you their health and safety concerns, asthma, and things like that. And you're turning your back on them? I think that's pitiful. And you're using a lame excuse that there's no money.
Okay, thank you. Next, last final comments.
I'm Pinaki Patel. So everybody agree there is a health and safety issue? Is everybody agree, or no? Do we have issue here?
This is not open question.
Okay, but, okay, so the question is then, what are we going to do to improve it? What are we going to do as a trustee? What are we going to do to improve it? And who's going to take on from the Canton Township to improve it if we don't pave it? Anybody? No, no, but is anybody's going to take on what to do here to improve it if we don't pay?
If you guys, anybody that wants to have open dialogue conversations, you call my office, we'll sit down, have coffee.
And the last thing, we have done everything we can with the state official to reduce the speed and everything. It's not possible.
Thank you. I'd like to close on two positives here, small positives. One is, there is state legislature that Phil LaJoy was pressing hard for, and has been for more than a year prior to him exiting, that was moving through, which would allow local communities to actually designate speeds on dirt roads. So we've got KKR, KKRAM coming in tomorrow. Tim, let's make that a huge priority, to see where that sits in the state legislature. And then the stop sign portion of it. Bernard, I'm going to look to you, sir, for help on that specific topic. And then, that being said, I want to close it on positives, guys. So that's where I'm going to stop. That being said, we've got the motion in front of us. Did we have a second, Clerk Segrist?
Yeah, I have written down, I made the motion. John Anthony is in support. We have had citizen comment. We have had director discussion. We have had board discussion. We had a second round of citizen comments.
Good. That being said, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye. Aye. Not in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Good. All right, the motion has been defeated. We are now going to move on to the next general calendar item, which is now G1. Thank you, folks. We do appreciate you coming in this evening.
All right, this motion is in two forms. For first reading of amendment to Canton Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Article 3, entitled Massage. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of amendments to Canton Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Article 3, entitled Massage, Sections 18-82 through 18-107.
Support. In terms of a summary, we have, upon review with the Clerk's Office, finds it necessary to clarify several areas of existing massage establishment ordinance established August 23, 2009. Canton Township currently does not have limitations on the number of massage facilities permitted within the township. And recent amendments to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances revised guidelines for massage establishments, establishments. The proposed text amendment would provide for protection of the health, safety, and welfare of township residents and massage business customers by ensuring legitimate operation of such businesses, while prohibiting illegal and unlawful massage parlors. Additionally, it would clarify the process for the applicants in the various departments involved, eliminating confusion. The Clerk is requesting the Board hold its first reading at this meeting, and then table for consideration and hold the second reading at the July 25, 2017 meeting. The amendment, the amended ordinance will be published and become effective August 3, 2017. Is there any Board comments or questions? Any Board comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The second portion, Mr. Supervisor, I move to table for consideration amendments to Canton Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Article 3, entitled Massage, Sections 18, 82 through 18, 107, and schedule the second reading on July 25, 2017.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, item G2. Consider approval of a resolution accepting jurisdiction and maintenance of landscape features in the Cherry Hill Road right-of-way for future czar development.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the attached resolution agreement for long-term maintenance of landscape facilities for the czar development, and authorize the Township Supervisor to sign this document on behalf of the Township.
We have new residential and commercial developments in Canton Township that are required to obtain permits from Wayne County for construction of right-of-way. The czar development is a multi-tenant commercial building in downtown Cherry Hill Village. The replacement of certain landscape features, trees, and patches at this site, sidewalk that is greater than five feet in width, Wayne County has requested that Canton Township accept jurisdiction and maintenance, and also indemnify the county prior to issuance of their permit. Canton Township has consulted with Wayne County Local Council on specific language for some of the resolutions which have been provided in that. Is there any Board questions or comments regarding this resolution? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Have we done this in any other part of Cherry Hill Village?
Yes, it was done with the original phases of Cherry Hill Village back in 2003 through 2006, whereby we accepted the jurisdiction as part of the road project, but then passed on the responsibility for maintenance of all these streetscape features to the property owners along that stretch of road. So.
And that's what we'll be doing here as well?
That's what's already been done, yes.
Ken, I'm sorry, last question. Where is this? What part this is?
So this is immediately east of Roosevelt, which is kind of across from where the two-story brownstone units are located, right on Cherry Hill Village, or Cherry Hill Road.
So this is a part that exists already, or they're building?
This is.
So we've already approved the plan for them to build, we're just doing the landscaping pieces?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Done. Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G4. Because we moved G3 up, is consider purchase of the water meter, control devices.
Supervisor, I move to accept the quote from Etna Supply Company and purchase a, and approve a purchase order not to exceed $160,000, and authorize the Public Works Division to purchase the necessary water meter control devices, MXU, and further move to waive the finance purchasing policy, requiring formal bids as these items are supplied under a sole source contract through the Etna Supply Company.
In summary, in order to supply and maintain water service residential or commercial accounts, the Public Works Division maintains the inventory supplies. Radiohead devices are used to transmit data from all family and owners' customers. 2017 inventory improved earlier this year, and nearly completely over equal to reaching its full range of service levels. As such, the Division. Housing units are being requested.
Pat, just a quick question. Could you turn your mic towards you? I sense it's probably not picking up in the studio as well.
There we go. Now you can hear me.
Can you turn it away now?
Are there any additional Board comments or questions regarding this acquisition? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye. Aye. Motion carries, item G5. Which is really, yeah, still the same. Consider approval of additional block of professional services and additional software licensing with Kiri Works for Public Works Division On-Based Document Management System Project.
Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of additional professional services and additional software licensing from Kiri Works in an amount not to exceed $26,655.
Support.
Support.
Thank you, Diane. In late 2014, the Township Board approved a contract with Security Microimaging Services, now Kiri Works, for the implementation and technical assistance services for the Document Management System Project. The initial stages of the pilot implementation evolved standing up the software and hardware in a development environment with limited licensing for the users. Public Works is now ready to stand up the production environment, which requires additional user licensing, licensing for the on-base software and some technical support by Kiri Works. Total cost is $26,655. A portion of these expenses can be reimbursed in the state MDEQ Saw Grant Project, as it will be used for the records on our sanitary sewer collection system. Is there any Board discussion, questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye. Aye. Motion carries, item G6. Approve IT Services email Office 365 service renewal.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the renewal of Office 365 email system licensing within the Township's Office 365 email installation in an amount not to exceed $23,610.
Support.
Township's Microsoft Exchange email system and services is hosted with Microsoft Office 365. The Township must annually renew its licensing with Microsoft, as they do not offer multi-year agreements for customers our size. The Township's current prepaid online plan expires August 1, 2017. Renewal of this service is critical to provide uninterrupted access to Township email services. Is there any Board questions or comments?
Just a comment that I've enjoyed the last couple of years, that we've been using this service over the old server-based service. It's much easier to use, and probably cost us less than the last one. So, great.
Are they going to be using Windows 10 for this then, or what is this new service?
This is just our, to continue our email service on the cloud-based. So before, it was all housed in our own network, so you had to get in through our network. Now it's on the cloud, so you can access it anywhere. So it's to continue that process. You're welcome.
Is there any additional comments, questions from the Board? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, this brings us to our last agenda item this evening, Agenda G7. This was the additional, should have had a deck in front of you on your desk, and on the dais in front of you. Okay, this is consider offer to purchase property under the Wayne County Tax Foreclosure Program.
In two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the offer to purchase the following parcel of land under Wayne County Tax Foreclosure at the minimum bid amount listed for an amount not to exceed, from that parcel listed, for an amount not to exceed $630.55.
Support.
Typically, we get at the, this time of year, lists from Wayne County that identifies properties where the owners have not paid the taxes. And with that being said, if there's an opportunity for us to see, or if we see as a community, a community benefit of acquiring that property through the Tax Foreclosure Program, we do, and this is that. We've got a little. We've got a little bitty parcel there, there's $630 owed, which means for that value, we get it. It's adjacent to Floating Park, next to the ITC Trail, kind of a no-brainer, I think, for the board. It's a good decision to help us preserve some future green spaces. Are there any board comments or questions?
I'm just, there are some other maps, and I was confused by the, I see that one. Are we talking about these other ones, too, or just that one?
Actually, there were a few that we looked at, and we decided that one case is probably going to get defaulted back to us someday anyways, because it's, it'll never be buildable. And then the other parcel, I can't remember, Tim, that we said, ITC.
Yeah, this one's a residential lot in a residential subdivision. We typically don't buy those unless there's a public purpose, and this one, it's a, it's an existing vacant property along I-275 in Hagerty that is bisected with a drain. It just really doesn't, doesn't have any value to the township.
Okay, so we're not talking about those, just the first one? Sounds good. And I guess I should ask, I heard what the supervisor says, but it's such a small parcel, what, what benefit will we have to?
You can see, what, the drawn and colored pictures?
Yeah.
We've already bought those many parcels, so-
Oh, all the ones in blue are ours already? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all we're picking up is one that's attached to that group.
Sounds perfect, thank you.
Other additional board comments, questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our formal agenda.
Let me, um, sorry, we're gonna-
Oh, second motion? Oh, second, the second motion.
Yeah, we're going to authorize the municipal services, Mr. Supervisor, I authorize, I move, I move to authorize the municipal services director to make the written offer on behalf of the township board.
Second.
Gentlemen is in first.
All right.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye. Aye. That concludes our formal business this evening. Would the trustees like to make any additional comments at this point? Seeing none, Michael, I'm sorry.
Nope.
Seeing no additional comment, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got two of them.
Second, he moves, I second.
Summer moved.
Summer moved, and trustee Anthony supported. Those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please state aye. Aye. Motion carries. That's a wrap, guys.
Thank you.